Call the meeting to order. Everyone please rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised and by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. At this time, I will open the meeting up to comment from the public for items that are on the agenda only.
There's a number of parents here who are concerned about the budget. My name is Suzanne Currie, by the way, and I am a parent of a child who's in a more than school in Kingle Garden who has a one-on-one art professional. And there are a number of parents and teachers here who are concerned with specifically that item.
Okay, let me just stop you for one second. After this portion of the meeting, I was going to make an announcement, but I'll say that now in light of what you're about to say. The way we're going to run the meeting tonight is going to be a little bit different than our ordinary meetings. We do have a budget presentation, so we're going to withhold, we're going to hold any questions about the budget until after the budget presentation, even though that is an item that's on the agenda, there's going to be a separate presentation on the budget. So, the first thing we're going to do this evening, we're going to have a presentation about our aftercare programs, and then I'll allow those people, we'll have a brief intermission after that, and those people that are through with that portion and want to leave, we'll give them an opportunity to leave. Then we're going to have our budget presentation. Rather than waiting for the end of the meeting for public comment, we'll then open up the meeting right after the budget presentation for public comment on the budget. Okay? And then, after that's over and public comment is finished, then what we'll do is we'll move on to our regular business and our agenda, so everyone's not waiting around till the end of the meeting to do that. But I do think it's important that you hear the budget presentation before you ask any questions about the budget. Yes?
Will there be an opportunity to get a comment about the aftercare presentation after this?
The board, if the board has questions about aftercare, they will ask the questions at that point. If the public has questions about it, it would be, or comment on it, it would be at the end of the meeting during the public comment portion. We're not going to open up to questions, the aftercare program, to questions from the public. But the public can certainly make comments to us at the end of the meeting. Okay? So we got the ground rules down for our meeting tonight, everybody? Good? Is that okay? Okay. So, the portion of the meeting for comment on the agenda, I guess I should have said, will exclude anything about the budget. So, hearing none, we're going to move on. Do we have any committee reports this evening?
We need your roll call.
Nope. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Here.
Mrs. Dye?
Here.
Mr. Mandela?
Here.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Here.
And Mr. Sukala?
Here.
Committee reports. Thank you, Mr. Mandela.
No, sorry.
Mrs. Dye?
I briefly went to the South End Art Show today. Well, I get around, all right? I try to, you know? Yes, the art show was today. It was after school until 6:00 PM, which I thought is great for parents who have to work, or those of us who can't make it until 5:00. It was very nice, by the way. They do just a great job, the entire staff, especially Mrs. Martin, and every class was represented with numerous works, and it was really nice. So, and it's nice that they have it later on. I think a few years ago, it used to just be right after school, and so, I mean, definitely later in the day, there was a lot more presence. So I think that's nice, that a lot more people can participate and see the artwork. So, it was very nice.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, so let's get on with our presentation regarding the aftercare program. The board has been looking into different possibilities for aftercare currently. The YMCA is our aftercare provider. They've been for some time, and we are going to hear presentations tonight from the Y plus two other organizations regarding the aftercare program and what both the Y and the other organizations can bring to our district in terms of either maintaining or bettering what we have. So our first presentation, I believe we have Tiny Treasures here. Come right up. Welcome.
Hi.
Hello?
My name is Fran Benucci, and I'm the owner and operator of Tiny Treasures.
I'm sorry, can you just take the microphone over there? You can, if you want to speak from the center, you can, but you just need to speak into the microphone, so the public watching at home can hear you.
This is the microphone here. The reason why we do that is we're being taped live, so it's for the community to hear.
So you can take that off, or you can lower it, and you can come to the center if you prefer.
That is good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Fran Benucci, and I am the owner and director of Tiny Treasures Extended School Day Program. We operate in three of the Essex County districts, Fairfield, North Corwell, and Essex Fells. And we have a little presentation of what our program is all about. So, here we go. We've been in business, this is Jennifer Zampino, my director of curriculum and special services and overall go-to person. We're partners, we've been partners since Jennifer was born, and, but she came into the business after college. She started our first after-school program at Stevenson School in Fairfield in 1994. We started our original program in our, I owned a preschool center as well, Tiny Treasures Preschool, and we, our parents were at a loss for where to send their children after they graduated, so in 1992, we started a small after-school program in our preschool location. In 1994, the Fairfield Board of Education approached us to start an after-school program for them, which we did in 1994. And in 2000, we ran the Essex Fells Board of Ed, asked us to run their kindergarten enrichment program, because they still had a half-day program, and parents needed aftercare as well as an enrichment program for the kindergarteners. And we did that until 2007, when they started a full-day program. In 2002, we started to work for the North Corwell Board of Education. We also did their kindergarten enrichment, as well as their after-school programs. And then in 2009, Essex Fells started an after-school program, and they asked us to run that as well. So Tiny Treasures has grown from about 10 students to about 120, 125 students annually. Our philosophy and the way we run our business is that children come first, business second. We try to provide a warm, caring, and safe environment for children of working parents. We believe in a program based on both individual and group needs, and we provide experiences within a child's range of interest and competency, so that there are many opportunities for success that contributes to the child's sense of self-worth, and we provide developmentally appropriate activities that encourage growth and development. Our staff is made up of myself, Jennifer, and we have a staff of 18 staff members. We have three supervisors who have their degrees in education, and also one has a degree in psychology. And all of, that's okay. These are the three locations that we now have our after-school programs. And our daily activities include homework, snack, arts and crafts, indoor/outdoor activities, computers, electronic and board games, theme day, field trips, and sports and judo. These is just some of the schools and pictures of what we do on a daily basis. This is outdoor play, this is crafts, and board games, and Legos, and the things that the boys like to do. When we have arts and crafts for the girls, the girls just love to do arts and crafts, and the boys, not so much. So we have sports programs for them, we have different field days, like when we have a half a day, we do different programs with them, because they're with us then from 12 to 6:00, instead of from 3:00 to 6:00. So we like to bring in activities, we do a special lunch, all sorts of.
Magic shows.
Magic shows. Why, no, we do magic. Last month, we did a magic show where they, it wasn't just a show, it was a workshop. So the children got to see the illusions and how the illusions were performed. We've done, Jennifer handles all of the programming.
So we've done Lego building, robotics. We've done, like I said, the workshop. We had a nature center come in and do a whole presentation on local animals. It was from Morris County, so what's in the area, what they can see, what they can't see, what's important to the environment, how to take care of the environment. So like I said, it's educational as well as fun. They got to touch, they got to feel, and they all, they just loved it. Actually, the woman left her turtle shell with us, and they wouldn't give it up, they wanted to keep it as their prized pet. But, you know, so I do try to make things different for them. We'll do snack days, we'll do cooking activities with them. So we do try to make it like a home away-from-home environment, so they don't feel like they're in school again. And like I said, the staff itself is very well schooled, they're very well-educated. There's not teenagers there running the center, they're adults, and they have to answer to myself and to Fran, so it's pretty big shoes to fill.
Jennifer and I have both ran after-school programs in the trenches, not just from an office. You know, we've been there. Jennifer started the first program, her first year out of college, so she got hands-on experience, and it pays off when, you know, you've worked it, and not only, you know, been a supervisor from afar. We also offer a summer camp. Our summer camp is held at our preschool location, which is housed in a sports facility now, that we have indoor and outdoor turf. We have all sorts of games and activities. We go swimming, we have different field trips for the summer, and these are some of the things that we have, weekly themes, we have swimming, arts and craft, nature studies, computer training, water carnivals, unique and exciting field trips, indoor and outdoor play, flexible scheduling to plan around vacations, open longer than most typical summer camp programs. Some of our parents, each year, we send out a questionnaire on how we can improve the program, what you think of the program, and if there's anything that we can do to make it better. And some of the comments we've gotten, "A great program, we love Mr. Gregg and the staff at North Corwell, Cole loves Tiny Treasures, if you need donations, let us know, Kristi is great with the children, and even I enjoy seeing her at pickup, the staff is wonderful, kind, and friendly, Carla loves going." We just took little snippets out of some of our. "My children love aftercare and are disappointed when I pick them up too early, they always have their homework done, and staff helps them study for tests when needed. I would and do recommend aftercare for other families. Over the years, a great program. Cindy has been going to Tiny Treasures aftercare since first grade, she's now in fifth grade. She has always enjoyed it and gotten her homework completed. The staff, though changing throughout the years, has always been pleasant. We love Ms. Kathy." Some of the things that we propose doing for Cedar Grove that's different than what they have now is a financial, in the financial field, we would propose a drop in service for parents who do not need us at all the times, but need us sporadically. Offer a one, two, five-day program, instead of only a three, four, or five-day program. A two-payment option based on hours and days attended, which is like, the way we have it broken up, if your child attends after-school from dismissal to 4:30, it would be one price. From dismissal to 6:00, it would be another. And what Cedar Grove has now, it's just a one, one flat fee, whether you're there one hour or three hours. And we would offer more, what? The TIF, enrichment programs and clubs to bring, you know, more diversity for the children. In additional services, what we offer, we have parent communications via phone and email, we have constant contact, one call now, there's always someone in the office to answer the phone and get back to parents. We give out monthly receipts, our ratio is always less than 1 to 10. All students are signed in and out by us daily, and we also do weekly and non-scheduled visits from either me or Jen. Each of the board members has a copy of our business plan and what we propose for Cedar Grove in more detail than what was on the presentation. In closing, we have the knowledge, experience, and the know-how to make Cedar Grove's Extended School Day Program a success while giving the children an excellent after-school program. We are well-known and respected in the community. Partnering with Tiny Treasures School Day will expand the horizons of our children while achieving a successful business relationship.
Thank you. I have a few questions, I don't know if the board has any questions, but I guess the first question is, and I may have missed it as you were going through, currently, you're in three districts. What grades do you service in those districts?
Kindergarten through sixth.
Okay. And what we're looking for in Cedar Grove is someone who can cover kindergarten through eighth, and that's something that you'd be able to, you'd be able to have programs that eighth graders would enjoy, the same way that the younger children would enjoy.
We tailor our programs for each school district.
Okay.
And for the age of the children.
And how many schools do, is it just three schools, one school in each district? Are you in multiple schools in those districts?
In North Corwell, it's Gould and Granville.
And they get bused to one location. That was the board's decision, they don't want to be, they didn't want to open two schools, and the same thing in Fairfield. We have the middle school hook.
Churchill and Stevenson.
And they get bused to one location, again, based on the district's needs, they don't want to keep the school open, they want to cut everything in one location.
And in Cedar Grove, that wouldn't be the case. It would be, it's three different schools, that's something that you're aware of. What about taking pre-K? There's going to be a small pre-K program here, starting next year. What about taking pre-K students into aftercare?
We already located that with the state and like our other locations, because they do have the pre-K programs, and as long as they're not over, in the program, over three hours for an extended period of time, there's no problem taking the pre-K under 5:00.
And how about hours? What are your hours that you run the aftercare program in your districts currently?
From 7:00 to, 7:00 in the morning till the children go into school, and then we're at the school at dismissal time, which each.
Each school has a dismissal time, 3:10, 3:05.
What time do you end your program?
6:00 o'clock.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
But that could be changed if, you know, we don't, at this point, we don't have a need to be open past 6:00, but if there was, you know, a need or a necessity, we would stay, some schools open till, stay open till 6:30.
I had a question regarding, you have the ratio, it's 10 per adult. Can you just explain how the breakdown is per school, as far as, is there a supervisor, and then the staff, and how that works?
There is a supervisor at every location, every day. There is also two or three aides who work under the supervisor.
And that, the, when you talk about the ratio, it's the aide to children ratio?
It's one person to 10 children.
Okay.
Tiny Treasures usually goes well above what the ratio is required by the state.
The ratio of the state is 1 to 15.
Okay.
At school-age level. But we always keep it at less than 1 to 10.
And is the 1 to 10 including the supervisor and the three aides, or is it the three aides, so it's the four adults?
Four adults.
Okay. And the supervisor, that's, in your presentation, that was the, those individuals had the degrees?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Gregg has his degree in psychology, he's working for his masters. Ms. Samantha has her degree in childhood education.
I'm a minor in special ed. And Ms. Kathy is a, has her group certification, and has been running the program since.
About 12 years.
12 years. And like I said, she's just, you know, she's got three, her own daughters of her own, so she brings a lot of experience in mothering instinct, as well as professional knowledge.
All right. And if brought into Cedar Grove, obviously, we would need, you know, obviously, it would be covering for three schools, and so there wouldn't be an issue hiring supervisors with that level of degree? Okay.
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, we appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, our next presentation is going to be from, is that Workforce Connection?
Work Family.
Work Family Connection. Welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
Great, thank you. All right. Hello, my name is Heather Turco, I'm with the Work Family Connection. I am an executive senior director, I've been with the Work Family Connection for 15 years. Next to me is our executive director, Aurora Pipeling. I will be doing most of the presentation tonight, but I'm sure she'll chime in if I forget anything. So, thank you for having us, we're happy to be here. We'll get started.
Can everybody see this? I could go around this other side, maybe that would be clearer. Can you see better now?
Am I in the way? Okay. This year is actually our 25th anniversary, so we are very excited to be operating for 25 years, that's a big accomplishment for us. We only do before-after-school programs, summer camps, and extended-day kindergartens. So this is all we do, this is what we specialize in, this is what we take pride in, this is what we are constantly trying to improve in. All of our programs have been word-of-mouth referrals, and I have listed some of the districts that we are in. We're in one of your neighbors, in Montclair, we do their summer camps. This summer, we're providing about 15 specialized summer camps. That, Montclair's a little different, they are run by the teachers, and they're specialty camps, and we help them administrate them. We get about 800 students through the summer in that camp. Some of our other districts, we run a normal summer camp, like a full day, 7 to 6, we go on trips, swimming, the traditional day camp. But we are here to talk to you guys more about your before and after-school programs, is my understanding. So, the Work Family Connection, we're national leaders in our field, we help develop the national quality standards, which is through the NAA. Our executive director, we won't talk about her age, but since she's been doing it for a long time, she helped develop the licensing regulations through the state, which, there's actually requirements for our staff that they have to meet. So, the person that runs our programs is called a site director, they have to have a degree or have certain years of experience and requirements, and we follow all those We tested quality after-school standards for New Jersey, Rory has been a New Jersey State after-school ambassador, I have been invited and declined, I have a young son of my own. We have partnered with Hundred and Healthcare for childhood obesity, we've partnered with the Girls in Science Project, workforce development, I, we annually attend the New Jersey School Board conferences, the state NAA conferences, we're always trying to look for new curriculum content, better way to do things. So, and we also, if anyone had heard of NJ After 3, we were one of the original partners and had sustained three grants from there. We ran programs in Irvington and Roseell Park, New Jersey, for about five, six years. So.
The NAA standards are high standards in relationship to your state minimum standards. So the NAA standards are at a level where you have to achieve higher level of staff qualifications, as well as staff-child ratios, as well as professional development, and as well as different standards that your programs have to adhere to on a daily basis. And we'll talk a little bit about them, but just to give you a difference between the normal state standards versus the NAA.
So, and I am moving through these quickly, but I know we wanted to keep it to 15, 20 minutes, so if you have any questions, just ask me at the end. One of the biggest things that we care about is, it's called childcare versus enrichment. We feel our programs are enrichment and not childcare. I'm actually offended if you say that I do childcare. We work with school-aged children, and we try to provide them enrichment daily, throughout their social skills, problem-solving, homework, childcare, things that are done to keep someone healthy, safe, et cetera, supervision activities, games, project. Enrichment is to improve or enhance the quality or value. Something has been learned, projects paired with learning tools, books, art, challenges, and makes them think. That's our goal in our programs every day. The Work Family Connection, we have strict program quality control. It starts with quality staff, qualifications in education or related fields, years of experience. Prior to employment, all of our staff have to go through fingerprint checks, child abuse checks, prior employment, health and TB, I-9, disclosure statements, and medical clearance. All of our staff have to go through orientation training and continual in-service training annually. Formal evaluations of staff are conducted monthly. So far this year, we've had an average of 600 hours devoted to evaluation and training. All programs staff trained evaluated on NJ State, which is the NJ SAC. Quality standards, we have well-trained, mature staff, highly qualified, 25% are degreed, certified, and longevity. Our staff are required to fill full 10 hours of training per year for our teachers, 20 hours for our directors and above. And a director is a site director who's running a program, and the teachers are who work at that program under the site director. And then we also have our site coordinators, and they are responsible for overseeing a group of programs to make sure they're meeting our quality standards. This is a little bit Rory talked a little about, is our quality standards versus licensing. And basically, how we enforce this is we do two different observations. We have a program observations and site visit reports, which is a task of our site coordinators that go out to the programs and actually check on what's going on. These high-quality standards we are using are from NJ SAC. We are also checking that the state standards are being met, but we're doing two different checks. The state quality standards are more policies and procedures, where the quality standards through NJ SAC and NAA are more about relationships and what's actually content in the program, how the staff are talking to the children, what sort of enrichments are going on, those are the sort of things we're looking at when we're evaluating our programs. Curriculum and planning, first, most important thing is student involvement. One of the greatest things we have is we're not school, so it gets to be fun. So we try to really do things that the kids will enjoy and that are fun. So we try to get the kids involved in the planning, and we have some wonderful student theme weeks, we've had Minecraft Mania, Roblox, and my staff has done an excellent job of connecting activities to those things that, that I'm always surprised when they send me their newsletter, and I see how they were able to take Minecraft into a cooking project. So, they do a good job with that. We try to complement the school's curriculum, and that really comes down to the school. In a K to 8 district, we can't necessarily work with every individual grade, but a lot of times, the school have a theme for the year, whether it's bullying or respect, and we will coordinate any of events or anything that you have going on into our programs, as much as you want us to. Some of our schools that do kindergarten programs, we involve the reading program the school is using in our programs, things like that. So it really depends on how much involvement you want us to take. Our programs are run with theme weeks, and they are flexible and stay in compliance with new state requirements, and we always say flexible, because whenever you work with kids, if. Our programs are run with theme weeks, and they are flexible and stay in compliance with new state requirements. And we place, we always say flexible because whenever you work with kids, if it's a flop, it's a flop, and you have to have something in your back pocket to alternate to, basically. A typical before and after-school day, as students arrive, there are at least five activity centers to choose from. They're all listed there. We've taken a big focus on STEM, which I know the schools are as well. So, we try to incorporate that into our programs weekly. We also do homework. It's a contract between the child and the parent, and they select, whether it's mandatory or optional. And then we enforce that selection and then keep it attendance and then let the parents, there's a lot of communication going. We provide a nutritious snack daily with a grain, fruit, and protein. So, and of course, parents, if their children don't like it, can always send something else. And we're always aware of allergies. We follow whatever the school's rules with nuts, all of those things. But we also follow our families, if there's some special allergies. Students rotate throughout the day at their leisure while being supervised and tracked. One of the, my favorite examples of describing a really good after-school program is it should look like organized chaos. So, if everything's under control and the kids are having fun and there's a lot of things going on, that's a good after-school program. There is some, you know, content within that, but we try to, if we asked everyone in this room, "When you were a kid, what you did when you came home from school", we'd get all different answers. So, what we try to do is mimic that environment. So, kids that get out of school and they need to go chill out, they can go relax in the quiet area. Kids that want to come and they need to go outside and run or go to the gym and get all that energy out, we want to give them that opportunity. And kids that just want to get their homework done right away, we want them to be able to do that, too. So, we try to structure the day. So, like homework time is at 4:00. So, the ones that haven't done it right away and aren't going to do it unless, you know, you make them, that at 4:00, then we round up everyone that hasn't done it yet and say, "All right, now it's time to get homework out." So, that just tells you a little bit about how we run our programs. These are just some examples of some of the enrichment programs that our programs are doing. Air pressure can crusher, egg drop challenge, making musical instruments, create a play, marble run. We really push and train our staff that it's only an enrichment activity when the kids actually understand what is happening. So, they have to take that extra step with them. So, they understand that, yeah, this project is really fun, but what's happening? But again, we get to do it in a fun way. So, we try to sneak the learning in. Convenient and flexible registration. All of our registration is online at www-workfamily.org. Parents can register 24/7. We have a dedicated register available by phone, Monday through Friday, 9 to 5. You can register for us, one to five days per week, and we have various pickup times, 4, 5, 6, or 6:30. We would tailor the end of your day to whatever your district needs. The majority of our programs end at 6:30, but we do have some that end at 6:00. We also allow parents to preregister for drop-ins, which is a service that allows them to register with no schedule, and then they can just drop in as needed, and they just pay a daily fee for that. We operate on delayed schooled openings, so if there is a delay for snow, we will operate on the same delay schedule as long as that works with your school district. So, if you have a two-hour delay, our program normally starts at 7:00. We'd start at 9:00. Some of the schools now are doing trainings in the mornings with their staff. I don't know if you guys are doing that, but we're following that. Their scheduled delayed openings, we're doing that as well. We're starting our program at 7:00, so that school can do that. They're training, and then the parents are still happy. And then, parents that weren't registered could still drop in to use the service as needed. So. We also offer full-day programs and early dismissal coverage. Full-day programs is any day that the school is closed, but your, usually your custodial staff is still working. So, the buildings are still open, and the parents have the option. We can run a program all day. And early dismissal, we're there till normal pickup time, and there is no additional fees for that. This is an example of our monthly tuition schedule, of what it actually looks, and the choices that you get of the days and the breakdowns. So, that just gives you an idea of what the parents' options are when they're registering.
And this tuition schedule includes all scheduled early dismissal days?
Right. These are our, every year, we survey our parents through constant contact. These are 2000, 2013 parent results. 100% of our families were very satisfied or satisfied. 100% said their children enjoy attending, and 100% rated the staff at satisfactory or excellent. 92.3% rated the value at good or fair, and that's the cost of tuition. So. WFC School Partners. We partner with the school. We develop emergency plans and procedures for lockdown. We find out what your procedures are, and then we determine procedures to either match that or alternates, because after-school hours, not necessarily your procedures are the same. For us, there may be a building that's not available, so we work out all those details. We also survey our principals every year and want to get their feedback on our staff. The feedback we've gotten is the quality of learning in WFC is high. WFC manages student behavior well. WFC aligns with school goals for learning and success, and parents enjoy using WFC. Some of our schools, we get homework reference forms from schoolteachers, or you have a posting or a log that our staff can actually check and follow up for homework. So, we try to make use of those things. We try, we try to partner with the school and hire school aides, empower professionals, as well as people from the community. And we work closely with the schools for any behavior modifications, special needs accommodations we need to make. Our goal is always, we don't call it a behavior plan. We've actually called it a success plan. So, we work, we get permission from the parent to work with the school, the psychologist, the teacher, their doctor, whatever's needed. So. The extension to the community at large. We do a lot of community service projects, service learning, emergency response to school calendar changes. So, if your calendar changes, we change it with it. There's no issues. We try to participate in as many fundraisers with the schools, the PTAs, the PTOs. If you have education foundations, we try to find out all that information. The staff that we hire, we try to have them reflect the same student diversity, where it's going to create local jobs. And we also offer college scholarships that are available to our former Work Family Connection students.
So, what Heather was trying to say here is that the tuition that the parents pay in the district go right back into Cedar Grove School District via all of these types of things, besides, of course, paying for staff and supplies and everything. But we're, we work for your community and for your school district. So, the tuition that parents pay not only pays for the programming, but comes right back to your community in these ways.
So, we're not going to bring in a bunch of outsiders. You'll get one or two of us to come get, help get everything set up and running, but we're going to hire local in the community and train them to our policies and procedures, basically.
And our scholarship program goes to students who have attended Work Family Programs in school districts in which we work. And I think in the earlier slide, just so that we're clear, we're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization.
This is an option that's available. We do in some of our districts. We provide clubs. There are no costs to the district. A lot of budgets have been cut, and you've got to, had to get rid of a lot of the extras. So, in some of our schools, we've been able to administer, club, register, hire, pay the teachers, collect the tuition, and do some of these things that you've been able to eliminate. The parents pay for them directly through us, but we're able to negotiate. We're not the school district, so we have some benefits that you don't have, and we can offer these things. So, basically, we're trying to reinstate after-school activities that may have been affected by budget cuts.
And while you're reading the last slide, we'll make comments that our parents can say to us. Just for your information, we're in, as you know, we've been around for 25 years, and this is our specialty before and after-school programs. We work in 15 different school districts around the state, and we have about between 100 to 140 on our staff, depending on the time of the year, and the service, about 2,500 students on an annual page.
So, that is it. Questions?
Any questions from?
I know, I threw a lot at you really quick.
Would you, would you? Same question. One of the questions I asked earlier, there's, there's going to be a pre-K program in, in the district next year. Are you?
We currently do this in some of our schools, and the policy that we are aware of, we can accept up to five preschoolers at any of the programs. So.
And that's five on any given day.
Right.
So, for example, since we have a registration of one to five days, that means we can take five on Monday, different five on Tuesday, you know, depending on what the parent needs. That's the state licensing regulation. Otherwise, you have to have a different type of license.
And, and again, you, you know, you'd be operating in three different locations in the district. That's.
Yes. Well, all of, we're in K through 8 schools currently. We have experience with all of that. We have a lot of programs that already have the preschoolers that come. We do kindergarten wraparounds in some schools. We didn't go into any summer camp because we weren't really asked about it, so I just mentioned it a little bit. But this is what we do. This is what we love, and this is what, you know, we're always trying to strive to do a better job and work with our districts and really tailor to fit the needs of your district. We're not a cookie cutter. There are certain things we require our staff to do. We have to have policy and procedures to keep everyone safe, but we want a program that works well for your district. So, we will, you know, work things out to make it work. So.
In some districts, we actually do middle school programs that are just in schools that are grades 6, 7, 8. In some districts, it's grades 7 and 8, depending. So, but then in other school districts, if they're smaller, they may be in one program because it's a 28 school.
So.
Or in old different schools, different grades.
Yeah, we've had lots of experience. So, is there anything else?
I just had a question about the ratio.
Okay. We maintain usually 1 to 12. So, sometimes we're under that. The state is 1 to 15, but you, we usually stay within 1 to 12 or under.
Okay.
So, it really varies by enrollment, the different schools with those numbers. So, you know, once you get over 24, if we have 26 kids, we have to have three staff. Then we have, you know, 1, 2, 8 almost.
Okay.
So, it really depends on the, the numbers. It becomes a number game at that point. But our goal is to stay at 1, 12 and under.
To add 1 to 12, this year, our average has been 1 to 9.
Okay.
In our schools. But we try, we staff to 1 to 12.
Okay.
As, as much as possible.
So, did that explain it?
Yeah. No, I mean, once you get over a certain kid, then you've got to have somebody else. Right. Absolutely.
But it turns out that we're always at that point, so we find that our ratio is more like 1 to 8, 1 to 9.
Right. So, it tends, it tends to be lower.
Okay.
And our summer camps are completely different, if you are interested in that. We do 1 to 12 when we're at camp, but we go swimming and on trips, when we go swimming. And water trips, we're 1 to 5, and when we go on field trips, we're 1 to 8. It really depends on the risk of the trip.
Okay.
So, we, it varies in summer camp with what we're doing. So.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, and our final presentation will be from our current after-care provider, the YMCA. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Dawn McFadden. This is Kim Burrows. She's our program director, assigned to Cedar Grove. I just wanted to open it up this evening and let you know that I've, I've been doing after-school care for 28 years. And we currently have 1,200 children throughout each day. We run an after-school program in the town of Montclair, Bloomfield, Verona, and Cedar Grove. And I think the important part is that there's common throughout all the presentations. We all know that, what the program goals are, and I think the most important part, of course, is the staffing. We can set the goals. We can give them the tools, the training, the supplies. But unless you hire correctly, it doesn't work. So, we, we are aware of that. We have what we feel is the most dedicated, loving staff right here in Cedar Grove. And we're, we're proud of that group. We wanted to also just kind of take through a little bit of the history of how we got here. Like I said, we've been doing this a long time. In 1996, we started in, in Cedar Grove. And in 2004, we were asked to start our middle school program here in this town. We're committed to the program. And we talked about the staff, the professional staff that we have back at the YMCA. We have four full-time professionals, Kim being one of them. Lisa Elise heads up the entire department. And collectively, that's the number of years they have just in school-aged childcare. Of course, the trainings, the conferences, the meetings, all very important, knowing the licensing procedures. And then again, any conferences that they can bring back materials to our staff and train is what's very, very important. Okay, our, our onsite staff, we talked about site coordinators, of course, meeting and exceeding the state licensing requirements. The enrichment leaders that we bring in, that's if we have a certain program going on at one of the sites, someone will come in with that specialty, and then also counselors. It's just really creating a good balance so that you have strengths in all areas, because you have children interested in a lot of different activities. They really need to complement each other. Again, just the pre-check, of course, the hiring, the interviewing, all of that being very important, and then meeting all the state requirements. No one is allowed to start work until background checks, fingerprints, and everything has been completed. Okay, these are some of the trainings that are minimum trainings that the staff must attend. Takes you through, of course, the safety and first aid and all of that, because they're there at the schools. The bloodborne and the child abuse prevention is mandatory. And then throughout, they, they can pick throughout the school year how they'd like to do their hours of training. I'm going to turn it over to Kim, and she's going to talk to you about the curriculum.
As Dawn said, I am the program director for the Cedar Grove Schools. I started at the Y 10 years ago. I started as a counselor in the after-school programs, then I was a site director, and then seven years ago, I became a program director. So, I'm very familiar with being in the trenches and being on the other side. As far as our curriculum goes, we tailor it to the students and to, it's based on our staff skills. So, there, we meet at the beginning of the school year, and we talk about the plan for the year. Who's going to do what? What new program are we going to do? What are your interests? How can we take this to the students? We provide homework health help. We're also very focused on health, wellness, and fitness. The Y USA has what's called the HEPA standards, which is healthy eating, physical activity. So, that's a big part of our program. We make sure that we have healthy snacks, includes fruits, vegetables, whole-grain snacks. We also do a nutrition component, and we do the CATCH program, which is coordinated approach to child health. And so, that focuses on taking standard games and making them more active for kids. A lot of times, sports activities, you have kids standing around while they're waiting to bat, or they're waiting to kick the ball, or they're waiting to shoot. So, we modify those activities. We have a music program. So, every other week, we have a staff member who comes in to do music with the kids. She does a variety of activities. She did a stomp program with the kids. So, they use basketballs, tennis balls, all different sorts of things in the facility to do the little stomp rhythm. She did rhythm races. She's taught them note identification. She's done Irish dancing with them. And with the older students, she also does guitar and ukulele lessons with them at the end of the music program. We also have some very creative staff, such as Carrie, who does a great craft club with the kids. She does sewing with them, Swedish weaving. They do stitching. So, it's great for the kids. They're learning skills that they normally wouldn't learn, and they're also learning self-confidence and patience. And they're taking pride in their projects. So, they start with a blank plastic canvas, and they stitch it into a tissue box holder. And we have Amanda, who loves dancing, and so she takes the kids in her group, and she does dancing with them. They learn new steps. They make little routines up. We have Faith, who's very active in baking, and so she's brought that passion to the program. She does a lot of decorating of cupcakes and cakes and things like that with the kids. At the middle school program, we've started a STEM program. So, in the fall, we piloted a program. It was called Design It. It has six different components. The first two that we ran were paper bridges, and then we did balls and tracks. So, it's a progressive program. As the activities go through, the kids progress in what they do. So, for example, with the balls and tracks, they basically were designing their own roller coaster. they basically were designing their own roller coasters with foam pipes and marbles. And each time, we ask them new challenges. So how can you make it loop? How can you make the marble go faster? How can you make it go further? And it's all inquiry-based. So you're constantly asking them questions. You're not giving them the answers on how to solve the problem. So you're asking them, well, how would it work better? What do you notice here? What do you notice there? Um, we're already set to do an explore it program next year, which is along the same lines, except it's six more components. One of them is cake chemistry. Another one is wiring a house. So they get a little sample house and they learn to wire it. So that's a lot of our STEM initiative that we have. And we also, um, as I said, we focus a lot on the kids' interests. So at the middle school also, a lot of the kids were interested in filming. You know, they all have their iPhones and they're always taking videos of things. So we wanted to channel that energy into something productive. So they wanted to do a film. So we filmed, we got the camera from the Y and one person was the film, the photographer. Another person was the director. We had the actors. We were throughout the school doing all sorts of filming. And then we edited it and put it together for a little movie for them. And they loved it. They loved seeing themselves on the TV. And they watched it up over and over and over again. Every time a parent came in, they wanted to show it to them again. We also do, I'm involved with NJ SAC. And so I've been part of a working group with them, which is called Supporting Student Success. And that's how we can align our activities with the new core curriculum that's required. So we're focusing on that as well. Um, I know that we have some other activities where, um, our kindergartners don't always have homework. So we try to keep them included and make them feel special. So they'll read a story and then they'll do an art project related on that story. But as Dawn said, it's, it's a lot of it has to do with our staff. They have a great passion for the kids. They have a great passion for the program. And they bring that passion every single day. And the kids feel that in the activities that they lead. And, um, this slide right here just shows a little bit about the participants. So as you can see, South End is our largest and then North End and Memorial. But we started this program 18 years ago with a handful of students. Same with the middle school and we built it up. And we just really love being a part of this program.
In closing, I just wanted to mention that, um, this year, we hired an outside company to come in and do a survey for us. Uh, surveyed all of the schools, but we're able to break it down for us. So even though we're in four districts, we're able to tell us from each school, uh, get parents' feedback. Uh, we use that as a measurement for this year. Uh, we will do it again at the end of the year. We normally do it ourselves in-house. We were looking for something different this year to give us some additional direction and make sure that we're meeting parents' needs and any new expectations that sometimes when you've been at it for a long time, you don't realize that something that you're not hearing from the parents they want. Um, so we will conduct that survey again at the end of the year. We've set some of our goals by that survey this year and we're hoping that, uh, the feedback will, will show that. Um, also, uh, just our last slide, we had that we have $17,500 per month that we give out to scholarships throughout our four towns. We also assist families with programs for parents, state subsidy programs, in helping them through that process. Um, and really, some changes that we're planning for September, a couple of things. We piloted a program this year in Verona for the punch card and parents seem to like that. We plan on implementing that. Uh, we have a survey out of whether or not parents need to go to 6:30. This, we go to 6:30 in a couple of our districts. Uh, we go to six here and that seemed to work well, but we will again pull parents. And also online registration, just working through that to make it simpler for parents. Uh, in closing, I just wanted to mention that we're a not-for-profit community organization. And more importantly is that we're your community organization and we hope to continue it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, from the, we're not taking any questions from the public. Um, you can make public comment um, at the end of the, of the meeting. Okay?
Thank you.
If you have any specific questions that you want answered, you can let us know at the end and we can, we can, uh, okay? Thank you. Board of any questions? Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Uh, at this time, we're going to take a five-minute intermission. And anyone, everyone is welcome to stay, but anyone who, uh, who wants to leave and not listen to our budget, uh, hearing, uh, that's, that's fine too. That's why we're going to take a little bit of a break. So we'll take five minutes and we'll reconvene a couple of minutes after nine. Thank you, everyone, for coming and sitting through our, um, our initial presentations. Now, uh, we have the highlight of the evening, our budget presentation with our superintendent, Mr. Featherman.
So we had gone through this not long ago. So this will be just basically a review of what we had said at the last meeting. So if there are any questions, uh, please hold them till the end and we'll do our best to answer them. So as you see here, we've been doing our due diligence in terms of the budget. It doesn't happen overnight. Lots of lengthy considerations are made to arrive at this point this evening. Here's just a brief background of some of the, uh, the benchmarks for your information. So we've met in February, March, and of source, of course, we've met often and many days in between. A more detailed look at the budget preparation timeline. Uh, of course, we wait for state aid figures to be released. Along the way, here are some of the highlights for that. The state has given us some money, $10 per child, to prepare ourselves for the PARC tests. You've probably heard of PARC by now in some context, the partnership of assessment of readiness for college and career. It's a, a lengthy term, but basically it's, it's benchmark assessments that your children will be measured by, uh, starting next year officially and for many years to come, we're sure. So there are some monies there. We will use them wisely, probably to better prepare our teachers to have access to computers. That's probably where we'll be putting the money at this point. That's open for discussion, but we're happy to get, albeit a small number, we're happy to have received it. There are some other state aid figures there that are self-explanatory. Please note at the bottom that throughout this lengthy process, one of the, um, the driving forces behind it all is staying within the 2% cap. And that's why some of you were here this evening. There are some tough decisions made along the way. And, you know, I was once told that where you stand depends on where you sit. And as a parent, I understand that decisions that boards of education, superintendents make directly impact on our children. And so the decisions that were made along the way were, were wrestled with. But the bottom line was, we stayed true to the philosophy of the 2% cap. And some tough decisions were made that I'm sure we'll be discussing down the road tonight. So here's the big number. Here's our total operating revenue. Uh, it doesn't mean a whole lot, but this is the sort of the, the tax levy, the big, the big pie in the sky here, 27 million and change. So what you'll see tonight will be a reflection of that 27 million. So what comes in will go out. There's, there are no gray areas in terms of the bottom line. That's our number. We've stuck to it. We've budgeted to that number, uh, and we were successful. Breaking down the operating revenue. Again, there's, there's lots of numbers here. There's, if you have questions, jot them down. We'll be happy to address them for you. But from, from the budget fund balance on down to the aftercare program that you heard from tonight. I do want to point out the integrated preschool program, which is new. Mr. Kenny's in the back. He was, you know, the key contributor to bringing the, this new idea, this integrated preschool program to Cedar Grove here in the fall. We're excited to do that. I'm sure you've heard about it. We've been talking about it at board meetings and publicly and in the newspaper. So, Mr. Kenny, again, thank you. Operating revenue continued. Some more big numbers here. Just trying to see what I want to highlight here. I mean, it's, it's pretty self-explanatory. I mean, there's, there's 27 million dollars and it doesn't go that far. There are large categories of monies. And, uh, here they are. So you'll happy to hear once again that the expenditures equal revenue. So that's, that's a good thing. How about instructional programs? Yes, it's costly. You know, you're talking about staff salaries. Now, I didn't touch that. This happened the last time. I didn't touch it and it advanced the slide. So let's go back. I'm just, I'm an electric guy, I guess. It's just the electricity that I generate here. There we have it. I'll talk fast. You saw it? You saw it. It was there. I promise. Staff salaried. A lot of numbers, big numbers. Okay. Now, I, I don't mean to be silly, but, uh, that would get annoying to keep going back and forth. But again, we're breaking down the, the big number and into numerous categories that you hear us talk about all the time. Special education, out-of-district tuition. These are large numbers and there's only so much to go around. So the bottom line is, we make the best decisions for as many of the kids as we can every day. And that's, that's what you've charged us to do. How about benefits? You know, when you're talking about a, a large budget, relatively large, 27 million dollars, what does most of that money fund? Well, really two categories, right? And what might they be? Salary and benefits. I mean, that's, that's the bulk of what you spend the money on. That's the bulk of what your tax dollars are paying to support. And from there, everything flows. But of course, the devil's in the details. You've got the social security, the pension contributions, the comp, the workers' comp, the tuition reimbursements, other contractual obligations, things that you may not think of, like uniforms for custodial staff. It's all in here. And certainly you see there are, towards the bottom, health benefits. Large number. How about support services? We have many. Did you catch it? Because it was there, it was gone. It was, it, again, we're talking about secretarial support, administration, central office staffing. It, it all takes a tremendous amount of time, energy, and of course, money to provide those services. Additional support services continue. We have a technology, an IT team. Again, these folks work, work hard to keep our technology infrastructure up and running, constantly improving, bringing in new ideas to keep us ahead of, or at least on, the technology curve. Talking about salaries and benefits there. Transportation. Aiden Lou, how about athletics? It's a large part of the culture of Cedar Grove. It's, it's an important piece of our identity, as I'm sure you all know. And then the co-curricular piece. You know, the, the club activities that we're, that myself, the board, you are, and our, our kids are involved with all the time. How about the operation and maintenance side of the budget? Again, some big numbers here. You know, we're probably, not probably, we, we are the, the largest employer in Cedar Grove, right? I mean, we've got, we've got five buildings. We, we employ hundreds of people and we, we instruct almost 2,000 students. So there's a lot going on. There's a lot of operation and maintenance going on. Now, that wasn't there when I looked before. So I guess to the taxpayer, again, I apologize for the technical difficulties here. This, this may not mean a whole lot to you, but really this is the brass tax here in terms of what you're paying for the average assessed home. You get your tax bills at home, as I do, and a lot of it goes to your school district. And so these are sort of the, the breakdowns of what that looks like at the micro-scale level. How about curricular enhancements? Well, this is where we, we, you know, we, we fight for, for every last dollar because, you know, healthcare costs in particular and, and salary increase costs are skyrocketing. So what you'll see in these next few slides is that the curriculum enhancements, as important as they are, aren't many. And so when we make these decisions, day in and day out, week in and week out, month in, month out, you know, we're doing the best we can to improve and enhance curricular offerings that make an impact on your children. That's where the difference lies, the effectiveness of our teachers and the programs they provide for your kids. Was that the slide that was on there before?
It was.
Oh, that's very good. So at the high school, thank you. At the high school, we've, we've managed to add a full-time business teacher to, to the fray. Now, they may not seem like much, but, but right now, our math department is picking up the lion's share of the financial literacy component that the state requires. So by adding a business teacher, it will allow us to move the financial literacies from the math department into the business department, as it were, and open up all kinds of possibilities for our students of mathematics. And we're very excited about that. Uh, we're, we're looking to add programs. We'll talk a little bit about AP statistics that we will be adding as of September. How about curriculum writing? It's an ongoing process. We have a five-year curriculum plan. It's been modified recently to keep track of, keep up with frankly, the state's changing demands relative to the common core. But the bottom line is, the curriculum is the lifeblood. If you're not constantly tending to it, you will lose pace. So every year, our time and energy and resources have to be dedicated towards monitoring, maintaining, and improving curricular offerings. So this coming year, this is a snapshot of some of those programs that will be revised and rewritten. How about Memorial Middle School? Well, if nothing else, you've got to maintain and manage the lifeblood, the curriculum. So in this particular case, here's where we're focusing this coming year. How about North End and South End? We will be adding a reading specialist. You know, in the time that we spend here, and the days are long and they're, they're, they're invigorating, we realize that reading is where, you know, we really need to invest some of our resources. And so to acquire a reading specialist for the North End and South End population is very important to us. And so it is one of our priorities and we're happy to report that we will be securing a reading specialist, again, full-time, part-time. We'll find out how the numbers work out. Curriculum writing. And then textbooks. We're always looking to provide better vehicles for those teachers and students to travel through. How about district-wide? Again, not much, but what we can do, we're going to do it well. And we have an IXL program. We've been using it at the high school level, middle school level. Now we're piloting it this year at the elementary level. We've, we've purchased an extension of that program and will allow more of our children to have access to this wonderful program that will help them in both language arts and mathematics. Wow, that was fast. I guess that's what happens when you go through two, three slides at a time, right? Are there any questions? That was an abridged version, but I think the, the point was made. That we, we spent a tremendous amount of time and energy evaluating where our resources need to be spent. Questions?
I guess I have a.
Yes.
Two comments. One, um, for the public, we don't have copies of this PowerPoint available because there were some late changes, but it will be up on the website tomorrow.
Yes, it will. Sure.
So anyone who wants to follow along and look at that more closely will be on tomorrow's website. And second is, um, it bears, I think, mentioning that this year's budget is, we're, we're up against the cap, a 2% cap. So we can only go 2% higher than last year's budget. And we were able to stay within that based on what we just saw. Is that correct?
It's correct.
Okay. Those are the only two comments I have. Um, I don't know if anyone has any comments before we open up to the public for, for questions.
I just had a, a quick one at the beginning, in the two seconds that we saw it. Um, under the revenue, it had the aftercare program and it was listed as the YMCA. But obviously, we heard presentations today, so there's been no decision made as far as what that is for the following year.
Right. Right. Currently, the YMCA has, you know, we have an, an agreement with the Y for that figure. And, you know, depending on how, um, this evening's presentation's received and it's evaluated, we will be returning, you know, a communication to the, the good folks that presented here tonight and make a decision on, on how our aftercare program will look coming this fall.
Any other comments before we open up to the public? You going to stay there, Mr. Featherman?
Sure thing.
Okay. Great.
Whatever you need.
It's up to you. I just don't know if you want to come back here. Okay, um, at this point, Mr. Featherman has gone through the budget for our next school year. I know that, um, there are some questions. So I will welcome anyone who wants to make public comment or, uh, ask a question to step up to the mic. Tell us your name and your address and fire away. Mrs. Trupia, you're first. You're first.
(inaudible) Mr. Featherman.
I don't get it very well. Thank you.
My name is Suzanne Trupia. I live at 8 Dalewood Road in Cedar Grove. And as I said earlier, I have a daughter who is at North End School. She has a one-on-one paraprofessional. And the first question that I have is, can you tell us what cuts were made to the budget for the next school year? You told us what was in, you know, what was being spent, but what are the cuts that are being made?
Well, I think we can, I think we can, I think I know where you're going with the question. I mean, I think there were lots of considerations made, but I think specific to why you're probably here tonight, we're talking about cuts to the paraprofessionals.
Those, and in addition to that, what other cuts were made?
Well, I...
Mr. Featherman, I have the list here.
You do?
Thank you. You're welcome. So some of the things that we've talked about that were presented from the administration a couple months ago, so were the health benefits, reading series. We were actually able to purchase a reading series of value of $157,000 this year, so we were able to reduce that from next year's budget. Also, single healthcare benefit, maternity leave, long-term maternity leave, were given family coverage, and they will be offered single coverage, as the paraprofessionals will be. We moved a lot of property maintenance-type items out of the general budget and moved it into capital outlay, so it came from a different fund, so it's not in the general fund. And that was significant. And I guess that's... There were some other things that never even made it. You know, the elementary schools asked for additional computer labs. There were some equipment changes in the high school. So the things that were on people's wish lists that never even made it.
Those wouldn't be considered cuts, right?
Right. Right. I'm just kind of listing what was on the document.
Right. Can you tell us a little bit more about how the plan for paraprofessionals changes? How was it this year? What was their wages and their health benefits for this year? And then what will that change be for the same people next year?
Well, I know that it was decided that they'll get, from a pay standpoint, they'll get a 2% increase, which is, I believe, what has kind of been the standard increase year on year. They, the administration did actually a survey of health benefits, not pay, just health benefits, because pay wasn't changing, and looked at communities all around Essex County to see what was extended from a healthcare standpoint. And Cedar Grove far exceeded what was being offered everywhere, and actually still far exceeds with, right now, what the offering is, a single healthcare for the fam, for the paraprofessionals versus family. And when you look at the comparisons, like 12 districts offer none at all. All paraprofessionals are scheduled part-time, and there are no benefits paid. We were amongst, well, we are now amongst West Orange, Cedar Grove, and North Caldwell, based on this document, that provide single healthcare. And so that was really kind of how it was considered, because either we had to cut programming or we had to find other ways. Because healthcare, when we originally started budgeting, it increased 12%, but in the budget now, it's 9%. And with salary and wages, I mean, we're really stuck with that 2% cap.
With this, obviously, with this change, it's going to make it near impossible for some of the paraprofessionals who are currently employed in the district to remain in this district. These are people who we spent time and money training, of course, and who know our children, who know our teachers. So with the quality of the new compensation package for paraprofessionals, it seems as though the quality of education, certainly for our children and for all the children in Cedar Grove and the support that teachers get, will decline. And so my question is, why from this area rather than, say, extracurricular activities or, which we're not legally obligated to provide for our students? We are legally obligated to provide adequate education for all students. We're not legally obligated or have any responsibility for, say, sports programs or after-school programming, which parents could pay to have their children involved with.
Well, I think the important thing to consider, and look, these are not easy decisions for anybody, but the important thing to consider is, we provide, we're still providing more than the majority of the communities. So we're, we remain competitive, more competitive than a large listing of towns.
It depends who you look at. Right. It depends who you look at. You look at Wayne, the article, I think you probably saw the Wayne District's article on April 17th stating that their employees have, you know, got an increase in paraprofessionals, and they are part of a union and have some representation, but they also maintain their current health benefits. So it depends where you're looking. If you're looking at a few neighboring towns, sure, but if you look a little further...
Well, even more than Essex County.
Or actually, there are a few outside of Essex County, too. You're right.
Let me just add that it's all supposition that the value of the education or the value of the service that you're getting is going to decline. Just because a paraprofessional decides not to stay because they've been reduced doesn't mean that we're going to get somebody who's single, who is experienced, who wants to come in here and work, and is going to do a very, very good job for your child and all the other children in the district. So I appreciate your concern, but I think that you're kind of taking a step that may not even come into fruition, because, you know, we're not looking to hire subpar people. We're looking to keep our people if we can, because we like the job that they do. And if they can't for reasons that are beyond their control, then we're going to look for quality people who can come in with the salary that we offer and the benefits that we offer and work. We're not looking...
Which is a lower incentive than what we have now.
But it's in line or more than most of what the rest of the county offers. So we are still competitive in that respect.
Let me see what else I have. How much money will we be saving by making this change? How much money will this actually be saving the district by changing the paraprofessionals' plan in this way? $174,000.
Does that include the maternity?
No, and maternity would be an increase, an additional 75,000.
That's separate, that would be a...
In addition.
I thought it was 100 plus the 75.
No, it's 174 and 75. Right?
174 for the paraprofessionals and 75 for the maternity leave. Significant.
We've also, we've also decided to, in the past, when we've hired a maternity leave replacement, we've offered him or her dependent care benefits. We are no longer going to be doing that. You know, another tough decision, but sizable savings is reaped from that decision.
Right. Those are people who would be coming to our district new, not people who are currently employed.
Typically, that's correct. Yes, typically.
There's another question that I had here.
Oh, you know, I had a question about the addition of the full-time, possible full-time business person. Is that person going to teach just financial literacy in high school?
We don't know that yet. At this, probably not. It looks like there'll be room in his or her schedule to take on additional business courses.
That was my question. So there'll be additional business courses added to the high school?
Well, it'll, what's been happening at the high school, unfortunately, is we've got a large number of students that flock towards the business electives and have to be turned away because there aren't enough seats. So at the very least, we're hoping to run additional sections of those business classes that in the past, we've had to run only one section of.
Financial literacy is a half-year course?
It is a half-year course, yes. It's currently paired with the Literacies, Inc., which is also a half-year freshman seminar, so it's how it works right now.
Is financial literacy in the just freshman course, or is it, is every...
Right now, we have our freshmen taking financial literacy and literacies as a freshman seminar. Both, each of them are a semester worth of study.
So it's a year-long, it's that position.
And that's, it's a requirement.
The financial literacy, yes. Not the other part of it, correct?
The other one is not.
Right. That's all the questions I have, if anybody else has. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? It should, but do you want to take...
I think we're talking about budget.
Okay. Gretchen, step on up. We won't have to let you wait here all night.
Hi, everyone. My name is Gretchen Godwin, and I am a parent at South End School. And I hope you don't mind, I just, I wanted to make a statement about aftercare, and I just put it to paper, because I wanted to make sure I didn't forget anything. I'm one of the parents who has to rely on others to take care of my kids, because I am in a household where both parents work. As you make the decision about the aftercare provider and which direction you decide to go, and I just, you know, how many of us have made a mistake with a childcare provider, whether it be a babysitter at daycare or someone else? It's hard to tell what a caregiver is really like from a meeting or a presentation, or from knowing that they're licensed properly, or what you pay them. My children have attended the Y's aftercare program at the South End School for the last five years. My husband and I don't worry when they are there. When I think of the Y, I think of a place that really cares about kids and our community, and that's really clear in the way that the aftercare staff at the South End School has enriched the lives of my children. It's obvious that working in aftercare is so much more than a job to the staff that's there. Over the last five years, besides how they've helped my extremely shy children come out of their shells, I've seen that they've cared for the sick children, giving them a safe place to lie down, wrapping them in blankets to stay warm until their parents could get to them, bringing the blankets home, washing them and bringing them back the next day so they're clean for the next kids. They've read stories to the younger children, worked with them on related art projects, done food drives. They've taken initiative to organize lunches, lunch options for the kids during half-days. They've run a craft club for the older children. My daughter really looks forward to it and couldn't wait for the, learning how to use a sewing machine to make a pillowcase, and she's all excited because they're doing Swedish weaving next. The staff has, every year, gone out of their way to make these personalized embroidered stockings. They start them the year before. In South End, there are over 80 children, and they make personalized one for every one of them and fill them and give them a gift at the holiday time. And they do this all, you know, on their spare time. You know, personally, I've been very happy about what the Y's aftercare program has done for my family, and I really think that it would be a great loss to the children and to us as parents if the Y wasn't able to continue to serve them. And the last thing that I just wanted to end with, besides the children in our community, the Y provides so much more than that. They offer scholarships to programs for adults, for seniors, for teens. They run a free seventh-grade aftercare program. And so, what, they give so much back to us, and so, not just to our kids, but to our entire community. And so I just, I wanted to leave that with all of you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any further comments on the budget?
My name is Abby Horowitz. I live at 11 Lindwood Road in Cedar Grove. My daughter is in the pre-K program, and I think she might be one of the youngest here, so she's going to be in the school district for a very long time, hopefully. But you mentioned that it saves about $174,000. I was wondering, how many aides right now, or paraprofessionals, does it actually impact? Do we know, do you know a number, how many take, have family insurance right now, or have single coverage?
Well, in terms of dependent care coverage, it directly affects nine of them.
Okay.
But others are affected in the sense that they, some of them opt out, and there are different opt-out levels of payment. There's opt-out for family, opt-out for husband, husband-wife, and there's opt-out for single. So if you're opting out for husband-wife, or if you're opting out and receiving a payment for family, you're also financially impacted. But in terms of dependent care coverage, the number's nine.
Okay. And then for those who opt in for the single care coverage, is, do they currently receive a contribution towards it from the school district? And is that going to continue, or will that be ending? You know, for example, my employer pays a certain percentage of, my rate that I pay is greatly reduced because the insurer pay, my employer pays, or if I was in Cobra, it would be a much higher rate or something like that. So is it continuing?
Yes. And to answer your question, the Chapter 78 that was initiated three years ago by Governor Christie, the aides contribute, say, for family coverage, about 4% of the premium cost, and they will continue to give a percentage portion towards the cost of the benefits, even as a single. It reduces down to about 3, 3.5%.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions?
Hi, my name is John Embesi. I live at 10 Oakwood Court in Cedar Grove. My son attends North End School. He receives special services. First, I'd just like to make a comment before asking some directed questions. I wanted to congratulate the district as a whole and Mr. Kinney on vast improvements in the special education program that have occurred since his becoming the director of special services. I'm proud to send my son here at this point in time, and I think that the improvements that have been made have sort of led us as parents to avail ourselves of the opportunities that my son has here at this school. My question is with regard to the issue regarding the paraprofessionals. I understand what the total dollars are. I'd like you to put it in terms of an individual employee. Number one, I'd like to know what the salary range is for paraprofessionals at the current time, and I'd like to know what the difference in cost, if an individual is currently receiving family benefits and would like to remain an employee in the Cedar Grove District, what is the actual dollar term difference in what they will have to contribute to maintain that policy that they currently have?
We can do that.
Because you can see where I'm going. I just want to see what the percentage of a pay cut they're taking, because we realize that one's compensation is made up of salary and benefits. So what I'm trying to get at, to make your life simple, is what's their salary range and what's the percentage cut that we're giving them if they wanted to remain an employee here?
Yeah. We don't have a salary range. We have a salary for our paraprofessionals.
Okay.
The exact number is 17...
17, too. Well, we'll go to 17.5 this year.
Right. With the 2% increase, it's 17.5. That's the flat rate, if you will. And if they want to continue with dependent care coverage, I believe that the monthly payment is 1,000 and...
$50.
It's a lot of money. It's effectively going to eat up their entire salary to cover that dependent care cost.
I believe it's 1,050.
50. Thank you.
That's the additional contribution that they would be expected to make as a result of the $174,000 cut.
That's the buy-up. For, you know, single coverage, they would be provided single coverage, which is about $15,000 a year in total. The buy-up, as Mr. Featherman just said, would cost approximately $1,500 a month.
And what's the contribution that the district currently makes for their, or will be making for their single coverage? In other words, I'm just trying, I mean, I understand there's lots of benefits out there, but just to put it in simple terms for myself to understand it, because you're talking about an employee who's only making $17,000, and you're talking about an over $12,000 cut in their compensation. So what additional, so just help me understand what the single payment is for their health insurance?
A single payment would be about $40 a month out of their paycheck.
Correct. But what is the district providing?
The cost to the district is over $14,000 for a single coverage. It's 9, 9,800 for health insurance, and there's another $148 a month for prescription coverage. The district covers their dental insurance, which is approximately $102 a month, whether it be for the employee or the employee and their family.
So what you can see is, and what I'm trying to get at, is that there's a tremendous percentage cut in these individuals' compensation, so much so that I would venture to say that it would be impossible if they depended on that coverage to remain an employee in the district. Now, I don't know how many of them have, avail to them coverage through their spouse or some other mechanism, perhaps Obamacare, I don't know. Correct. I know that that's probably part of your plan, but it's obviously not going to be as good as what they're getting now. So, and they're still going to have to pay something to get it. So I would venture to say that it really, you know, and I, I guess my comment would be, I hope you've done your homework. You're telling me you have with regard to surveying adjacent districts and learning what the pay scale of compensation is for a paraprofessional. It's not my job to know. The number sounds very low to me in general, but I'm sure that it is what it is. So I would say that it is important that you've done your homework, because it would seem to me that this is going to cause a tremendous disruption with a good number of paraprofessionals leaving, many of which are probably very good and very experienced. I will also comment that for a student receiving special education services who depends on a paraprofessional, that's the individual that often greets them in the morning and helps them get through their day. And without that, some degree of continuity in... helps them get through their day, and without that, some degree of continuity in the district for these people, it really will, I think, reduce quality tremendously, so much so that I would venture to say that if you cannot hire replacements at the same level, it may deny access to a free and appropriate education. And as such, I would venture to say and hope that you've done your homework, because in the end of the day, this may end up costing the district more money. That would be my final comment.
I just have a comment to make, and Renee, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I just want to make the public aware that the board just started paying for the family benefits three years ago, when we went into the state health plan. Prior to that, when we were private, when we were not using the state health plan, they had to pay into for their family benefits. So this is nothing new, that, it just so happened that we were forced under the state, when we went into the state health benefit plan, that everyone had to get the same coverage. When we're out of the state health plan now, that is why we are not obligated to offer that. So many of our aides have been here much longer than the three years that we're offering this, so it's unfortunate, and I understand, but I'm on the corporate world, and my health benefits are through the roof what I have to pay for, and I work for a major company, and it's just the world we live in today, and it's unfortunate that that's how it is, and we are not looking to just hit a certain group. But when you hear of $250,000 in an area that other districts are not paying, and it's very, there's one on the list, one, it just stands out that it's something that is not a given, and it's unfortunate, and there's areas, there's always someone that has to, gets hurt when there's cuts. And we understand that, but it's not like we're taking away something that other districts are offering. And again, we didn't offer it before.
Right, and which is why I prefaced my comment, it's not my job to know what the compensation scale to be competitive in the market. There's a market for paraprofessionals. I just hope that you've done your homework, because just, the number sounds very low in general, and, you know, it almost sounds as though the pay scale is, you know, one that's not very high to begin with. So to take something away from a person that's making so little to begin with, whom certain students depend upon, the most vulnerable individuals in your district, it just, it has to be something that I hope was thought out very well, and that's all I'll say about it.
And again, even the history on the salary, we were much lower at one time, and the board, at one budget year, we gave an increase to that area because we saw that it was a low salary at one time. So, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, again, I believe we were as low as $12,000 at one time. So, I've been on the board a long time, you know, so I know the history and what's going on, so I, I'm just trying to, you know, give the facts and make sure the public is aware that we would, as a board, again, looked at every area that we could, and you can hear by, when Ms. Burke gave you the cuts, there weren't really cuts, it was just areas, like, it's not like we, we, what am I trying to say? We didn't add anything to our budget. What we're doing is just maintaining status quo. By having a 2% cap, that's where we're at right now, with healthcare costs where they're at, and again, we just went into a state plan three years ago, and it's a tremendous on-taking of all the paperwork and everything that needs to be done. But again, our business office is conscientious, and we always look at areas of where we could save money, and again, we looked at, by leaving the state plan, because it would have cost us more money, we went outside again, and it actually saved us, but then the premiums go up like they do every year. And I'm sure all of you are seeing it on your own healthcare plans with work. So, it's not like we're adding programs and we're cutting the paraprofessionals to add all these other programs. We're maintaining status quo right now, and we may have to look at next year, going outside the 2% cap to cover the healthcare costs. You know, that's going to be something that we have to look at as a board, because we can't afford to cut programs. We don't want to cut programs. So, that's just something that we may have to look for, look towards in the future, and we don't want to, but that may be something we may have to do. So, again, I hope I didn't say anything that was out of line. I'm just trying to give the history and let everyone know that this is not an easy thing to do. We know we're affecting people's lives. We know that, and we wouldn't make the decisions we're making if there was other ways to not do that.
I think another thing just to add, you know, the staff, the administration is not just looking at areas to save money, but they're actually looking at additional revenue. When you looked at the revenues page, the change to the preschool program, so now it's going to be a full inclusion preschool, so that there'll be typical children in the classroom as well as special ed children, which actually makes us more competitive. It's a better program, and those students will pay tuition, and that's where that additional $27,000 comes from. And there's actually more students, we have more students in the lottery than we can actually put in the program, as well as the aftercare. The reason we had those presentations tonight was how do we increase the revenue we get there? So it's not just about, we're looking, they are looking under every stone to try to find a way to make the expenses equal the revenue.
Thank you. Any further comments?
I just don't have a question. I just want to express this opinion that I'm proud to live in this district. I've always been proud of what we do as a board and for our students. This decision, however, it just, it's lowering our standards, and I don't know why we're looking at other districts and saying, here's what they're doing, let's lower our standards and do what other districts are doing in terms of providing an adequate education. And I know I asked this question, but I'm still not understanding how we take away money from an area that provides education, adequate education for students, and not an area that is extracurricular. I understand that the town as a whole, it's part of the picture, the sports clubs, it creates a great environment for many students, but again, it is not our legal obligation to provide funding to support after-school programming. It is our legal obligation to provide adequate education for all students, and I know that we're still under the impression that we'll get adequate paraprofessionals with this lower compensation package, but you have to admit that with a higher incentive comes more qualified, a more qualified pool of professionals to support our children. And we are in fact forcing people out who have been with the district, who have been committed and loyal to the district, and will have no other choice but to leave because of the changes to their salaries. So just to express a concern, I, as a parent of a child with special needs, hope that it is an adequate education, because in the future, I might be looking for out-of-district placement, and if two other parents do the same thing, there goes that $175,000 that we saved on benefits for the paraprofessionals that are currently in district. So, you know, I hope this short-term fix isn't a long-term financial burden for, in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Supa. I live at 53 Young Avenue. I have three children at this school, pre-K first and second, two are in the special education program. I am saddened that the fact that I feel like, I don't understand why more, again, I see that you were checking other districts, other school districts, I'm seeing the pay scale, but I almost feel like it's taken for granted that had there been something to attack or to take away from something recreational that might affect a larger population of students or a larger population of parents, maybe the special education grouping is that much smaller and the pay for that staff is less, but I feel like it was an attack and a cut on the wrong side. I mean, it affects, I truly do believe that it will affect the people that we do get, even though you'll say you want somebody comparable, but it affects staff. I'm a nurse. We got rid of old experienced nurses. We get new grads for less pay with no experience. It affects patient care. Same thing's going to happen here. The cuts are everywhere, but I feel like more could have been done. If it affected a larger population of the students, I think that you would have searched other avenues of where to cut from. But it saddens me, I have a second grader who is doing amazing, started not talking, and I'm afraid that it will affect him and his progress. I have a first grader, I have a preschooler, I think it's affecting them in their developmental education, the basis of their future education. It's here, it's now, and it may truly affect that. You will get less qualified people, but you'll try. It will affect outsourcing, but it'll happen. I'm saddened that it wasn't addressed earlier to maybe check things before definitive decisions were made. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Going once? Okay, I'm going to close that portion of the meeting. Thank you, everyone, and we're going to move on. We'll take another five-minute break, in case anybody cares to exit at this point, and then we'll move on to the business at hand. So thank you all for coming, and again, you're all welcome to stay if you like, but in case you want to leave, we're going to take a five-minute break. We'll see everyone back here at five minutes of 10. Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order. We're going to move on the agenda. From the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary, may I have a motion for, under minutes, for B1 through B4? B1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of April 15, 2014. B2, a motion to approve the budgetary transfers for the month of April 2014. B3, a motion to approve the treasurer's report for the month of March 2014. And B4, a motion to approve the board secretary certification to the board that no line item has, account has encoverances and expenditures which exceed the line item appropriation set forth in that item. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any comment? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
And Mr. Secalla?
Yes. May I have a motion under bills for B5, which is a motion to pay the list of bills that were given to us in our packet for April 29, 2014, the amount listed. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any comment? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mrs. Mandela? Oh, I'm Mr. Mandela, I'm sorry.
I know which one you're talking about. Mermaid.
I'm sorry. Mr. Mandela?
I don't usually hear any of that.
I don't know.
I know, I know, it just.
It's seriously her first.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Yep, sure. Yep.
Mr. Secalla?
Yes. Under business, may I have a motion for B6? I'm sorry, yeah, B6 would be eight, and that's under business. B6 is a motion to approve Energy Solutions Window Tinting, to install window tinting as set forth in that motion. B7 is a resolution, whereas the Cedar Grove Board of Education recognizes school staff and board members will incur travel expenses related to and within the scope of their current responsibilities, and for travel that promotes the delivery of instruction or furthers efficient operation of the school district, and whereas the Administrative Code set forth therein requires board members to receive approval of these expenses by a majority of the full voting membership of the board, and staff members to receive prior approval of these expenses by the superintendent of schools, and a majority of the full voting membership of the board, and whereas a board of education may establish for regular district business travel only, an annual school year threshold of $175 per staff member, where prior board approval shall not be required unless this annual threshold for a staff member is exceeded in a given school year, July 1 through June 30, and whereas travel and related expenses not in compliance with the Administrative Code but deemed by the Board of Education to be necessary and unavoidable, as noted on the approved Board of Education out-of-district travel reimbursement form, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education approves all travel not in compliance with the Administrative Code as being necessary and unavoidable as noted on the approved Board of Education out-of-district travel reimbursement forms, and be it further resolved that the Board of Education approves travel and related expense reimbursements in accordance with the code to a maximum expenditure of $18,500 for all staff and board members. And B8 is a motion to approve the Cedar Grove Public School District budget for the 2014-2015 school year, and be it resolved that there should be raised for general funds $24,611, $24,611,801 for the ensuing school year for 2014-2015. May I have a motion for those three items, please?
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
On B6, is the window tinting for security reasons, is that?
Yes.
Okay, because I figured since it's hitting all the schools, so it's a recommendation to make it harder to see in? Is that the idea? Okay.
We've got a pretty aggressive program to enhance our safety.
Great.
And that's another step in the process.
In the right direction. Good, great, thank you.
I have a question on B7. If you could just give a little bit further explanation on the travel expenses, because I thought this is covered in the contracts for staff.
Per the code, we have to put an item on the agenda every year, yes. They're only entitled to the New Jersey OMB rate, and if they are to exceed, if they're going to a workshop or whatever, that it would put them in a situation where they would exceed the 175, it would have to be board-approved. There were certain CST employees that do, you know, back and forth driving to private schools and et cetera.
Gotcha.
I get it.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
And Mr. Secalla?
Yes. Mr. Featherman, you have a superintendent's report for us today.
I do.
You know, Chris, there's a copy here.
Isn't it online?
Yeah, it's online.
It's 10 o'clock. Do you know where your children are?
Mine should be in bed, I hope. There you go. I should have passed this out earlier. I'll just pull out some highlights of this extensive report that took me hours and hours to write, rewrite, edit, revise.
But it's available online.
But it will be available online as of about...
And we use it as our cheat sheets when we go to the FSA, so.
If I stick to the script, I will be brief. Our emphasis continues with a focus on curriculum and promoting the STEM fields, as you heard earlier, certainly mathematics and language arts. We also continue our emphasis on networking with professional organizations, as this is a time and age where our teachers and administrators, you know, need to be schooling themselves on how to best prepare our teachers to raise the bar for our students. I did want to mention the Friday folder. It never gets old, I know, but we've been doing this for three months now, and as you know, it's sent out via email. Please take a look at that. I mean, our metrics say that you're doing a nice job of checking it out, but we're still hearing, we, the board, and myself are still getting feedback from the public that the Friday folder may not be the most effective means of communicating certain programs, functions, and the extension of invitations. We think this is a good idea. It should work. It helps generate revenue for the district by way of selling ad space on that Friday folder. To many, it's a convenient place to find a collection of items related to your child's school district, or rather, school building, and there's district-wide announcements, rec announcements. Please check out the Friday folder. We send it out every Friday. We're taking feedback. If there's something you think we can do to approve on it, we're certainly welcome that. So again, check out the Friday folder and your superintendent on Twitter.
You haven't been tweeting much.
I haven't been tweeting much. It's, you know, not much to say, I guess.
I wait, I wait for tweets, but I don't get any.
I might tweet on my way home today. I'll pull over. This was, you know, this was a tough meeting for all of us. I mean, you know, a lot of, you know, we understand how people feel, but, you know, there's a business side of what we do, and we're doing the best we can with what we've got. There is a lot of good news here to report, and so if I stick to the script, we'll get through this, at the high school. I want to say congratulations to Brandon Deese. He is one nice fellow, and he was selected as the Student of the Month for the Business Department. Congratulations, Brandon. Good job. I'll catch up with you, shake your hand. The National Honor Society just inducted 16 new students recently. It was a great ceremony. It was nice to see so many people there to share in that. An upcoming reminder, on Monday, May 5, at the high school, we have Academic Awards Night at 7 o'clock. We hope to see you there. It was nice to see so many people there to share in that. An upcoming reminder, on Monday, May 5, at the high school, we have Academic Awards Night at 7:00. We hope to see you there. It's always a great evening to just celebrate academic awards. It's what we do, and it's a fun evening. Hope you can make it. Cedar Grove High School will be holding an eighth-grade parent-student orientation on Wednesday, May 28, so please mark your calendar for this important event. We've already had the middle school parents into the building, but we want to get you back so we can talk to you about the high school's academic as well as co-curricular offerings in a more detailed fashion. So we hope to see you on May 28 at 7:00. Athletics, this is the time of year where we reflect on our student-athletes' accomplishments from September to date, and a number of awards are given out. So congratulations to Julie Lynn for being selected as the NJSIAA Scholar Athlete for Cedar Grove. That's a big honor. Congratulations, Julie. Congratulations to David Nijoku for being selected as the Men of Essex Award winner. That's also a big, big honor. Congratulations, David. Congratulations to Julian Goldberg and Joe Slattery for being selected as the Essex County Scholar Athletes for Cedar Grove High School. Again, another impressive honor. Congratulations to Paul Ruffo for being selected to receive the Best Athlete Award sponsored by the Investors Bank and Yogi Bear Museum. Congratulations, Paul. Well done. Congratulations to Michael Slattery and Rodney DePrenda for being selected to participate in the Leadership Program hosted by the New York Jets. They're underclassmen, so good job, Michael. Good job, Rodney. How about a congratulations to Ryan Fearon, Gina Lacante, Elena Zikino, and Michael Bocino for being selected as the Army and Marines Athletic Award recipients. Nice job. How about to the middle school briefly? Just want to point out a few things. The eighth-grade character education class is doing a great job. They've been creating skits about bullying and spreading the word. The students presented the skits to the fifth-grade character read classes, and the messages received from each skit were important to both the fifth and eighth-grade students as they were learning from one another. NJASK is going on at the middle school, so it's an important time. There's stress. Let's make sure that your children are getting a good night's sleep, getting a good breakfast in the morning. We're looking, as always, to improve those scores. How about at the middle school? There was a school supply drive spearheaded by the fifth grade to help support the elementary school destroyed in a fire in Edison. Over 15 boxes of school supplies were donated. We even held a hat day with over $135 was raised. Nice job. How about South End real quick? Congratulations to Mrs. Martin, Ms. Frye, on an outstanding art show. And that goes for both South End and North End. South End had their art show today. North End's was the week before last, right? I'd tell you, what a tremendous job that our art teachers do, all of our teachers do, but in particular for this art show. The kids there are beaming, they're standing beside their projects, and it was just nice to congratulate a lot of those students and take a look at their hard work. Seussical was performed for all South End students, grades K through 4, on April 14, and Mrs. DiMatteo said the kids could be heard humming the rest of the day. So how fun is that? I also wanted to just welcome to South End, Ms. Victoria DiGirolamo. She's a third-grade maternity leave replacement. So welcome, Victoria. And also Mr. Chris Failey, our new LDTC here at South End. He's already made some early contributions, so welcome aboard, Chris. Just want to make one mention of the Gifted and Talented Program. I had mentioned it earlier that the Near Peers Program was being developed. While the Near Peers event was held, where our ACE students in eighth grade were partnered with seniors at Cedar Grove High School, the feedback was amazing, and we're looking to expand. So basically, what we did was we paired up the eighth-grade Gifted and Talented students with a select senior, and they spent the day with that senior at Cedar Grove High School. And the feedback simply was they can't wait to get to the high school. So good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Featherman.
You're welcome.
Okay. Moving on the agenda under personnel, may I have a motion for S1 through S7? S1 is a motion to approve the superintendent's report. S2 is a motion to approve Sean Sweeney, resource math maternity coverage teacher at MMS. S3 is a motion to approve the resignation of Peter Ohanian as the head tennis coach.